Agenda item number eight is general items. Oh, excuse me, no, that's been polled. Excuse me for that. Moving on to number nine. Affordable Housing Deferred Loan of up to $850,000 with the Regional Housing Authority for a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue presented by Darren Gale. And refresh my memory, do we prefer public comment on this item now or after staff speaks?
After staff speaks.
Thank you very much. Welcome Darren.
Good evening Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be able for you to speak about a housing project. In September, October last year, the city council held a special workshop and talked about a housing strategy. A pill Democrat wrote a story about that and then I believe in November, the council adopted a five-year housing strategy. We'd been talking with a couple residential developers as we continue to do, but the first phone call that I received after that article was from Gus mentioning that he had read the article, Gus being the executive director of our regional housing authority, and talking about a project that they were proposing and that they, that he hoped that as the council was discussing residential housing, that they were discussing all types and all forms of residential housing. Myself and, and the city manager sat down with Mr. Precera and he talked about a request for a deferred loan on a project that they are proposing for the corner of Garden Highway and Miles. This is the location. It's where the former corporate offices of the regional housing authority were located and they're proposing a approximately 40 unit project that'll be heard by the planning commission on the 27th. The reason why this is time sensitive is they are looking to apply for a 9% tax credit and that application is due on March 4th. And one of the items that they believe will make them competitive for this project is demonstrating a variety of different funding sources and participation from a variety of different groups, including the local government. They have asked for a loan up to 850,000. The loan is a, is what's called a deferred loan to be paid back using residual revenue. So that's, you know, revenue after all other expenses have been paid. It's a 3% simple interest loan for 55 years. In order to assist them in their project, this has to be defined as a loan and not a gift from the local agency. There is a couple pots of money that the council, if you wanted to approve, the city manager signing a letter. One was the low mod housing asset fund, which there's just a little under a million dollars currently in. And the second one is there's our homes to family capital and maintenance account, which the former redevelopment agency purchased homes. And since that time, a few of those homes have been sold and there's not a need to hold on to the total 438,000 that's, that is in that account. So, and then also the city council could consider doing a loan as it relates to impact fees or water and sewer connections. Staff is recommending that, that the low mod housing asset fund and the homes to family capital maintenance fund be used. This is a rendering that the applicant has provided for this project that'll be considered by the planning commission. And I can answer any questions that you might have. Also, I know Gus is here and would like to speak on this project and would like to answer any questions that the council has. Thanks.
Gus, you want to come up?
Gus, come on up.
Good evening Mayor and members of the council. Be happy to entertain any questions. We're proud of this project. We've been working on it for a couple of years now. It's been a collaborative effort, but from, from the county, actually both counties, it's turned into a regional project. So both Yuba County and Sutter County, as you know, have committed a little over $2.6 million in, in housing money that they, that they have in their coffers for the project. We have a, an application pending with the local homeless consortium for some additional housing dollars as well. We have a meeting with them tomorrow to review our, our application and as Mr. Gale mentioned, located on the corner of Garden Highway and Miles where Percy and, Percy and Miles there intersect and change names. And that is correct. That's the side of our old office. That's a boarded up building that, as you know, is there now that we'd like to demolish someday and build a, a nice development for our community. We, the financial commitments from, from Sutter and Yuba County come with supportive services for our target population. And that's an important, that's a very important piece of this, of this project because the target population is, is, is a high-risk population. But those supportive services that come with it, they come with a 15-year commitment of supportive services for our residents. And so we currently have two other properties that have supportive services as well that we own and manage. One is, one is here in the city of Yuba City and one is also in the city of Marysville. And same kind of relationship with the behavioral health department and county health and human services where the residents live there and, and receive wraparound supportive services from, from these agencies such as case management, you know, counseling, psychiatry, therapy of any type. So we're not service providers. We're, we're housers as we call ourselves, but those two properties, the Yuba City one has been around since 2008 and the Marysville property's been around probably going on six or seven years now. Great properties with little to no issues and we'd be happy to offer you a tour if you'd like to see those someday as well. But we'd be happy to answer any questions.
A couple of questions Gus. The folks who move in, what's the, what is the target population?
The target population is, is homeless and homeless with mental disabilities.
All right. And then would the wraparound services that would, that would take place at the site?
Yes, both onsite or offsite. We are providing in our community room space, two offices for case management for the service providers to have office space and counseling rooms for.
That was my next question is there's a community space there for that?
Yes, there are multi-purpose rooms, small kitchen, I think a computer lab.
All right. And then the folks who live there, who are they writing their rent check to?
To the ownership structure, to, to the owners.
So there will be private owners then?
No, so, so the ownership will be comprised of a limited partnership that will be comprised of a nonprofit affiliate of ours as well as the limited partner. So if we're successful in, in being awarded low-income housing tax credits, those tax credits are then sold to an investor who kicks in the equity into the deal. That, that investor, it's typically a bank or an insurance company is, are, those are your, your, your most common purchasers of low-income housing tax credits. And so their entity, as long as, as well as the nonprofit entity, forms a limited partnership, which becomes the owner of the property. So the regional housing authority itself as an entity is not, will not be on title.
All right. So it's a group of folks, of investors coming together.
Correct.
Wouldn't be contributing to funding the profit of a private individual or private group then?
Well, it is private money that comes in from, from, from the investor. So, and it's the lion's share of the money. You know, our performa, our projections are at about 11, 11 and a half million dollars out the door, hard costs and soft costs. And the low-income housing tax credit investor would be coming in at about seven and a half, eight million.
Okay.
So it's the lion's share.
You'd mentioned the, the county contributing, Sutter and Yuba.
Correct.
Did they, is that the supportive services that they're contributing to this, is that what their financial contribution is or is it, does it consist of only that or they actually putting in money?
No, it's both. It's the supportive services and also about $2.6 million in, in cash.
Between the two?
Yeah. No, in addition to. So the supportive services, I think they're budgeting annually, it's about $400,000 a year in supportive services. In addition to the 400, they're committing to, they, they have committed $2.6 million in housing money.
And that's between the two counties or each?
Oh, good question. Thank you. That is between the two counties.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think that's all I have. Anybody else?
The, first off, I, I think it's a good project to try to get this target audience some housing, but I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Forty-unit complex, 14 parking spaces, that concerns me. It was originally proposed to this council through the planning commission notes, this was for a senior housing complex. And the assumptions, at least in that planning commission staff report, led me to believe that this, that parking space allotment was based upon seniors. This is now something different than that. Do those same assumptions apply to low income and to the two homeless?
So the, I believe the, well, Mr. Gale can answer that, but I believe that it was a typo on the staff report for the.
It wasn't a typo. It was, it went on and on inside the staff report talking about senior housing.
And I believe that's why it was rescheduled for transparency for next week's planning commission meeting. But to answer your parking question, so in, in our experience of support with the two supportive housing projects that we already are affiliated with and also touring, just other projects that we've seen in, in other cities. The target population own little to no vehicles. And so the, the one in Yuba City that we have now, the residents, there's not one resident that owns a vehicle. They rely on public transportation. The one in Marysville, I believe one resident owns a vehicle. And so from our experience, the parking ratio that, that has been requested is for that very purpose to maximize units for, for that very reason. And on our senior projects, we try to go with about a .5 to .7 ratio. I believe the 14 spaces that you're referring to, council member Boomgard, are in, on the property, but there's also, I think we are.
Five offsite as well.
Some offsites correct as well, yeah. But in our experience, you know, to wrap up your question is, is there's very little space that's needed for parking. And so we'd like to maximize the number of units that we can put in there.
Okay. Is, with this project, and maybe Mr. Gale will have to address this, was this project going to incur either facilities district fees or, or impact fees in regards to the burden it's going to place on police and fire?
So yes, we are subject to the community facility district fees and we were informed of that about six, seven months ago from, by the city. So we are aware of that and we've plugged that into our, our operating budget projections. And then to your second question, they are, they are subject to development impact fees.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I've got several questions for you here, piggybacking off of the parking scenario. You talk about supportive services.
Yes, sir.
How many of the 14 spaces is supportive services going to consume at this site?
So in our dialogue with behavioral health and health and human services, they don't anticipate having more than two or three vehicles there at any given time maximum.
Okay. Continuing along with this project, who is going to be ultimately responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of this facility?
The ownership structure and they will have a third-party property management firm who will be under contract to manage the property, maintenance and leasing activities.
Okay. A little bit further down the line on this project, as Mr. Gale stipulated, he used the word gift, it had to be a loan. Cut to the chase, what are you really looking for here? A gift disguised as a loan or is this truly a loan? Because I've read all the staff reports. It's paid on net revenues, net revenues is going to be zero. So we're not looking really to ever get paid back even at 55 years and 3%. So forget the legalese, what are you looking for, a loan or a gift?
To cut to the chase, the funding sources do require that, that these dollars be structured as a loan. So, you know, that, that is a requirement. If not, then we would come after the grant. It's just simpler, right? And you are correct, affordable housing properties, for the most part, don't generate a whole lot of cash. The funding sources that, that we're projecting to use for this property require annual deposits into reserve accounts for capital improvements and any operating deficits. So, so, and because the rents, as you, as you all know, are affordable, they, they don't generate a whole lot of cash. So to cut to the chase, jurisdictions who invest in affordable housing are looking for affordability. They're not looking for payment back on, 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 on the, on the loan. And so, so that is, I mean, you are correct, council member Shaw, that the repayments from residual receipts will be, will be very small. And it's truly to, to seek affordability for units in our community.
Okay.
You are correct.
The questions I have, because we have to be very prudent with the resources that the city's entrusted us with.
Of course.
So we're going into a 55-year note with the regional housing authority. You're responsible for paying that back over 55 years, even though you're going to sell the property? Or do we attach the property to the new, the loan to the new owner of the property? How is the city going to get paid back any at all?
So one of the options that the city can do is, is, is we've, we've structured deals in two separate ways with other cities or counties. And one way is where the jurisdiction means that makes the loan directly to the housing authority and then we turn around and just become a borrower and a lender all at the same time. Or the jurisdiction can make the loan directly to the limited, to the partnership, to the limited partnership and then, you know, basically bypass us, so to speak. And it just, it actually cuts down on a lot of administrative work for everybody that way. So that is an option that the city has, you know, with your, with whatever funds the city loans.
I have some more questions for yourself, but Mr. Gale, you would probably be able to answer this for me. The low mod housing fund that we've basically got a million dollars in, what can those funds be exactly used for?
They can only be used for affordable housing projects. Low mod, moderate being 80% or lower. Is it 80 to 120? Sorry, 80, so moderate is 80 to 120% of the median income. Low is below the 80%.
And the other fund, what can it be used for?
The, the exact same.
Okay. So basically we got 1.4 million available that can only be used for, between the two funds, for low-income housing.
Correct. And of that 400,000 that's in the homes to family, the rest would remain there for the homes that, that the city purchased, that the housing authority is managing. There's still, how many homes?
Twelve or 13.
There's 12 or 13 homes. So that, that money is set aside for any type of future maintenance on those homes. So we would not, if you wanted to change the allocations, we would not encourage taking more out of the homes to family because that money needs to be set aside for capital and maintenance of those 12 properties.
Okay. So all those properties, because I'm, I'm leading into an ultimate question I'm going to find out here, the answer to, but with this, the regional housing is managing properties for the city, but we're responsible for the maintenance, but yet on this property here, we're not going to be responsible for the maintenance. The private party would be responsible for the maintenance, correct?
Correct. And the housing authority is actually responsible for the maintenance of those, those properties.
Okay. Do we have any of those properties right now that are subject to needing repairs that would be coming out of this 1.4 million?
That'll be a question for the managers of those properties. We, we keep up, council member Shaw, on all of our capital improvements and, and needs to our properties. So I, I think for the most part, the properties that we manage for you at this time are, are up to speed with their capital needs.
Okay. I would like to clarify and know what these properties are. I did my homework, Mr. Mayor, and went on to the website for the RHA. Do you realize that your prior certified audit is not up for public view?
Our 2018?
2018 is not on your website.
No, it is on there.
It is not.
I just saw it today.
It may have just went up today. I was there Sunday night, it was not there. Okay? Likewise, I looked at your 2017 and there was concerns of cash flow, deficit spending from RHA. This is a warm, fuzzy, good feel it needs for the community, but we have to ensure we're doing the right thing for the community. And that's the reason I asked, is this a loan or a gift? And there was also mentioned all the way through your minutes for the year, that there's properties that need roofs and things that you can't afford to replace. And that's the reason I asked Mr. Gale if this money needs to come from our 1.4. Because if it's properties that the city is responsible for, then we need to be taking care of those.
I know those are not those properties, sir.
Okay. Can you give me the financial condition of RHA truthfully? Because I know also in your minutes that as of October, HUD has started requesting your financials on a monthly basis. I would like to know that as well, because we're lending you potentially $850,000.
And HUD has backed off of that. They now request them quarterly, which has been our practice since, since I've been working for that agency. We had a compliance review from our HUD field office in May of last year. We performed exemplary well. We were giving, we're given really high marks and their request for monthlies was because they told us that that's the practice of other housing authorities and what they expect of other housing authorities. We, we demonstrated that we are in good financial shape, truthfully. And they backed off on that and now they request quarterlies. And so those are the same reports that go to our board. Our capital reserve accounts are the highest they've ever been on all of our properties. We were just awarded by HUD, the fiscal year 2019 Public Housing Program of the Year. We are a high performer in our public housing program as well. We're a high performer in our housing choice voucher program. You know, we, we, we wouldn't be receiving these awards and accolades if we were in trouble. So, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions that are more specific, you know, maybe with our CFO if you'd like offline, but we, we're in great shape. But we, we, I think it's the best financial shape that we've been in since I've been working for this agency.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. I would just like to make sure the council understands that whatever decision we make here, we're realistically looking at a gift disguised as a loan. It's a good, warm project that needs to be done in our community, but at the same time, we would be committing potentially 850,000 of our reserves that could possibly be used for other homeless projects that I know the county has proposed, other things that they might be looking for funding for as well. And I, I appreciate what you said, but, you know, I would, I, I know that the minutes reflect some different things up until current. So I just would say exercise caution and think of the future. The balance between warm, fuzzy thoughts and good things needed plus prudent use of our 850,000.
I have a question. Through the mayor, Gus, and maybe this is for, for our staff. If we did not fund this loan, are there other competing projects? Or were there other competing projects? Or could there be other competing projects for use of these funds? Just help me understand that.
So currently we have no specific development project that's looking for affordable housing funds. We have one other project in town that is applying for a tax credit. They're not asking for any funds from the city. The only reason we know that is we have to sign off on a zoning clearance. So I received that email just the other day. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the location. The other one is, the county is looking at a homeless shelter. What they've told us as we've sat through the meeting is they're really concerned about funding as it relates to services, that they believe that there's a lot of grants out there that will help them build it. That being said, as councilman Shaw brings up, you have a, a very small amount of money for affordable housing projects. This is one that's, that's currently being proposed. At one time, the city was looking at a, a street called East Crest that's down off of Lincoln. I would say it's one of our worst streets in town. Luckily, it's just a court and hasn't like spilled over. And we've determined at the staff level, there just wasn't the funding to really try to improve that whole, that whole street. And when this project came forward, we said we would bring it to the city council for consideration.
Thanks. Well, another question, I know that this, and, and just help me understand procedurally, we, we could conceivably follow staff's recommendation tonight and then as this goes to the planning commission in a couple of weeks, they could amend it, they could change it, they could do a lot of different things to that project. Are we approving something ahead of, I guess the timeline's confusing to me, is that we, perhaps we should wait until the planning commission receives this, this particular project approves it and then, then deal with it? I know this, this council's always, at least they have in the past, claimed that we could convene quickly if needed to facilitate the grant, the application for the tax credits. But it just seems to me that, that the planning commission would be weighing in on this, you know, making their decisions and then, then the loan would be, or could be conceivably approved at that time?
Absolutely. The planning commission could deny the project. And so if the council approved it tonight, obviously would request that it be contingent upon the council's or the planning commission's consideration. But the council, if you're, if you'd like, this, if, if you want to have a special meeting after the planning commission is, has taken a consideration on the 27th. The only issue for, for the applicant is just that their application is due on March 4th. So if the council was to push this off till after the planning commission consideration, we would need to make sure that it occurred before the 4th to help them during this application process. That being said, there's another application process in, if you're, if you don't succeed in March, when's the next application? So July, there, there's a series of these. So this is for them to apply for, for the March. But yes, the, the council could, if you would like, you know, make this contingent or push it off until after the planning commission meets on the 27th.
Thank you.
Follow-up through the mayor. The project was listed that even if we moved it through tonight, it made it through planning construction, it, the earliest would not start till December. If it was moved to the second phase of the tax credit application in July, would that hinder the December timeframe? Because that's an awful long time in construction.
That would only be if they're successful for this March application. That I'm.
Correct.
Okay.
Through the mayor. The money that we're discussing, this is the taxpayers' money that contributed this to us, correct, Aaron?
That is correct.
This isn't, this isn't the city's money, this is the taxpayers' money that contributed this and.
These are funds from the former redevelopment agency that were set aside as, as a requirement.
Right. So it was given to us from the state. It wasn't, we didn't earn it. It was given to us to use as a process. Anyway, the, we have an issue with the homeless in our community. And this is the first step of curing something in our community. And it, you know, the city didn't earn, we didn't earn this money. It was given to us to spread to something that's going to help us in the future. And myself personally, I'm, I've, I'm on the regional housing board and I've been with this project for the last couple of years with Gus. And this is, this is going to be a great thing for our community. And we could put, we could approve this on continuance that the planning commission approves this also, so we don't have to have a second meeting. This could be all brought to us and it could be done tonight. The planning commission approves it next Wednesday night. It's a done deal and this will help us get this project, help us get this project going. Like I said, and we have a wonderful finance director for the regional housing board and Gus didn't mention this, but she has paid off a few loans. People have given us, have given them money to do projects on the regional housing authority and she paid them off and she paid them off years earlier. There was a 10-year contract and she paid it off in seven. So we do have wonderful people working for the housing board and this will be a great thing for our community. It's only 40 units, so it's a start. If there's zero out there, we still have 200 people in the river bottoms. We're in our community. If we build this, they're in a home, it's better for our community. So that's just my thoughts. And my thoughts, we need to go forward with this and like I said, put in conditions that the planning commission approves this. We don't have to have a second meeting. It'll go forward and hopefully the, the, we can get the grant money and also to continue us on, so this could be built and start the building this year and not wait another two years. Thank you.
All right Darren. We have one pot of money with roughly 1 million, one pot of money with roughly 400,000. You recommend that we don't, we not tap into the 400,000 to keep that reserved for the repairs of the homes?
We're recommending that you take 200,000 out of.
Half of that.
The 400, yeah. So it leaves them about 236,000.
All right. And then the money, I know, would it be this money eligible to contribute towards the homeless population directly, like a shelter of some sort or not qualified to be used for that? Does it have to be housing itself?
Has to be some type of housing, permanent housing.
All right. So how, permanent housing.
You know, and actually I shouldn't say permanent, just some type of housing.
Some type of housing.
Yeah. We, I could go back if you had ideas and look in to see if it met the specific requirements of what the council is asking.
Okay. What I was thinking was if this money, if we were asked at some point to help financially with the Sutter County homeless shelter, if, if we would be taking money that we could be used for that towards this, is that the same pot of money from which we draw?
For the actual construction and building of a facility, yes. However, what they've told us in the past is what they're looking for funding is for the supportive services, that they believe that they'll be able to fund it through grants, the actual construction of the facility.
Have they given you a number by chance?
They have not.
They have not. All right. And then, let's see, the, I mean, we all support affordable housing, I mean, big time.
I mean, big time. Would, and as an added benefit, would we be eligible as a city for additional and future grants if we are on record as having participated in supporting this project?
Not, not, not that I'm aware of. What this helps you do, though, is to leverage a possible seven and a half to eight million-dollar tax credit financing for this project, which they don't believe would be as competitive if they, if they didn't receive the funding or might not financially be feasible.
So an investment of up to 850 will help leverage seven to eight million?
Correct.
All right.
On top of the two and a half million that the two counties are kicking in, in addition. So, so, so speaking of leverage, this is an example of leveraging those dollars, you know, for every dollar you're putting in, you're getting another 10.
Right. Okay. That's a very good point. And we have 40 units, which would be, you know, I don't know how many people they can accommodate, but we're definitely going to house more than 40 of those 200-ish people that are there, living in the river bottoms. So that's a good point, too. And then who came up with the 3% at 55 years? Or not who, but how did we come up with that? I mean, that's a very good way to disguise a grant. Because it's, you know, especially if it's contingent on the ability to pay back. I don't even know if there's a minimum payment.
There's not.
Yeah. See.
So the, that 55 years, 3% comes from the low income...
From the tax credit allocation.
The tax credit allocation committee.
So that's the standard, the 3% at 55? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that's all my questions. Anybody have anything else?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I wanted to, Mr. Gail, I want to clarify on the funding that you're noting here, the Low Moderate Housing Asset Fund.
Yes.
And the Housing to Families Capital Maintenance Account. The housing that you mentioned, potential development on, what is it, Live Oak Boulevard, right? Sutter County?
Yes.
And that is a temporary shelter, correct? So there is no actual facility or house or building structure?
I would say to date, they... To date, they've not finalized anything. It's been everything from tough sheds to tents to buildings. So I could speculate, most recently, they've said it's going to be tough sheds. And there, a lot of the expenses is related to preparing the site, grading, drainage, site improvements that would need to be done prior to installing any type of building.
And these funds would not be allowable to use for that type of development?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Let's make the assumption that they are.
Let's make the assumption that they're not.
We'll make the assumption that they're not.
Because I can clearly look at the Low Moderate Housing Asset Fund. It's the word, you know, I've been doing housing for homeless for many, many years, as you're aware. So I, I think as a council, we need to be clear that these funds are specifically for what area of servicing homeless. If it is only allowable for development of a structure or facility, then we need to be clear on that. I do not, I would hope that our fellow council members would not be misinformed that the potential of these funds could be utilized for temporary shelter when, in truth, it could not. And in that, it would mean that Sutter County may have a whole other, within the regional housing, may have a whole other plan. My information of working with the regional housing and within the homeless consortium is that they are the people that develop and build houses, along with Habitat for Community. Those are the two major groups within the consortium. So for this particular development, Gus, I have a question on the support services with that.
Yes.
So within the support services, that is coming directly from social, from public entities of social services, or is that also, is that through the coordinated entry, or is that through Adventist Health? How is that going to be?
It's through Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health Department.
Because of the funding that they get through the Mental Health Services Act, correct?
Correct.
So they're funding it under that. And the No Place Like Home is actually, is that federal funding?
State.
State, but federal ties to that one, no?
No, I believe it's all state.
Okay. So that, those are required exactly for housing, correct?
They're only for housing.
Only for housing. So these grants are requiring loans in order to demonstrate the community has a long-term investment. Is that a fair statement?
I would say that is a first statement, Councilwoman.
So I, I'm just, I think the clarity that needs to happen, Mr. Gail, is that we need to know exactly that these funds, I'm not familiar all the way through, but I believe that these are specifically for development or capital. You wouldn't have put them in capital or maintenance account if they wouldn't be used in those kinds of possible options. Or Low Moderate Housing Asset Fund, if you're utilizing the, what is it, 80 to 100%, 120% low-income poverty, that requirement is specifically for housing, correct?
I cannot answer the question specifically if it be, if what the county is proposing as a temporary shelter, if, if the low mod can or cannot be used for that project?
It is not. It cannot.
Okay. I do, I cannot, I do not know the answer to that question.
I know the answer.
But I trust you.
Yes. It cannot. So at this point, the, the need for this is to meet the guideline, the timeline for March. And so, looking at the entire project, it looks like a worthy project on my view, and then it looks like this could be something processed, and then if any changes with our planning commission, we can come back if that needs to be. But I have no other questions.
And Councilwoman, just a, real quick on the Capital and Maintenance Account Fund. So when the city purchased these homes under Homes to Family, we entered into an actual agreement with the housing agency, which dictates that they need to set aside a certain portion of their monthly rents to go into the Capital and Maintenance Account. The only reason we're requesting or, or recommending that you remove some of the dollars out of there is because we've sold a number of those homes over the last couple of years, and there's not that full need, obviously, to have 438,000. And we talked with the housing authority, and they agreed that reducing it by 200,000 still meets their needs, their ongoing needs for the existing buildings that, that they have.
I appreciate that. So are these houses, the 12 to 13 houses, were these financed through the city?
Yes, they were purchased with low mod affordable housing dollars.
Exactly.
And the reason why we, the city started doing that is we didn't have an affordable housing project to invest in, and they're, you know, looking for the most affordable way to purchase properties.
And did some of these owners, or, yeah, owners of the properties failed to meet their payments, and why were there sell-offs in these residents?
I do not know why we sold off the residents. I know a couple of them were on Bridge Street for the widening. Is that correct?
Yeah, several of the homes were on the north side of Bridge Street, and so as tenants moved out and they became vacant, we purchased them with road funds to be used for the future widening of Bridge Street. And then I believe a couple of the homes, after the tenants moved out, it was just the staff decided to go ahead and sell those off because the market was good, and to get out of the business of owning homes.
Good idea. Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I remember the fact that the city had very, a very small footprint in low-income moderate housing, and that's how the city was doing that, by purchasing these homes. And so now we're trying to expand, it seems to me, based on this potential grant, that between the 12 to 13 homes that we have now, we could additionally perhaps have 40 additional residents for low-income moderate housing, and additionally with that, some mental health cases. That's, and a way to be able to final, to finance this. Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Mr. Gail, further clarification on these two pots of money.
Yes.
The low mod is only brand-new construction, correct? That's all that we can use it for? Can we use that to buy other properties and redevelop it and turn it into low-income housing?
Yes.
Okay. And then the cap maintenance can be used for either or as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other examples of projects is maybe a local apartment owner comes forward and says, hey, we want to make our project deed restricted 55 years as an affordable housing project. However, we need to put in $50,000 per unit to make them come up to standard. That's another type of project that could come forward that you could use those funds for.
Through the mayor. Yes, that's exactly what I was talking about. If a project like an apartment complex came up, the city could use either of these funds because it's existing building to turn it into affordable housing.
Correct. And, and what's required there is some type of deed restriction, just like on the homes that we purchased, they were restricted for affordable housing use. We can't just give it to the homeowner and say, oh, yeah, we trust you, right? The property owner, it's a deed restricted.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So one more thing. We have 1.4, really 1.2 if we go by the recommendation. $850,000 of that seems to be a big chunk, a high percentage. Admittedly, a little beyond my comfort level in case we want to do something else or when we want to do something else. Is, is the project, is, say, just worst-case scenario, we denied, is the project still going to be able to go forward? No?
Mr. Mayor, the, the request for the 850 was because of a financial gap that we have in developing the project.
How big is that gap, Gus?
850.
Exactly the same amount?
Correct. And then that's, you know, why, why we came to the city. But, but it's up, I think why your staff report says up to 850 is because we have a pending application with the consortium, the homeless consortium for, is that 450? 450,000, which they haven't announced official awards yet. So let's assume that the consortium awarded us the 450, then our request to the city would not be 850, it'd be 400.
Okay. I'm glad I asked. So we perhaps can consider 500, or we have to, we can wait and see what they get awarded from the, I'm sorry, who's else? Do you have the homeless consortium?
Yes.
We can see how much they add, they contribute. Or perhaps we can even consider giving them a reduced amount with that contingency and consider a reduction in impact fees. That would have an impact on it as well. Just a suggestion for our discussion.
Through the mayor. No, I, I agree with you. Thank you for asking that question. That is valuable, too. If that was the case, if there was a, you know, if you're, perhaps if you were to receive the 450 from the consortium, then the 400,000 or whatever we agreed to, up to, right? You would still be able to...
Yes, correct.
...accomplish what you're trying to do.
Correct.
To, to, my familiarity with building for homeless projects throughout the state and the nation, it is extremely expensive to do this, and it's very difficult to establish. So if we were to say, Mayor, that we kept, you know, we don't want to spend a million dollars, we're going to keep our million dollars and not play, we're not going to be able to do anything besides probably do some subsidies, well, we couldn't, because the monies are restricted in certain ways. This is, I think, a good effort to move us in the right direction. The other regional housing is working on some strategies that I think will help with what the Sutter County is trying to do on Live Oak Boulevard. I like your idea of if it were to, if they were receiving the 450,000, we will go up to the 400. We're, we're in a better shape.
Do you know when the consortium is going to reward this money?
What's that?
Do we know when the consortium is going to reward this money?
I don't know.
So I spoke with Scott Thurman today. He told me that once they speak with each one of the applicants personally, that they'll do some type of, of announcement. They're having a meeting tomorrow with Brenda Stranix as a representative from the UBS Sutter Homeless Consortium, and it's my understanding that she will be informing the housing authority of how much, if any, they will receive from HEAP funds. On top of that, I would just say in the last 10 years since I've been at the city, I only know one affordable housing project that's been proposed in the city and been built, and that's, there's an apartment project on the north side of Highway 20 on Plumas Boulevard. That is the last and only apartment project, let alone affordable housing, a project in our city. One of the reasons is we have to compete with Los Angeles. Now, if you've noticed, the housing authorities had some development in Live Oaks, Winters, is that Williams? Obviously, they don't have the same group of people that we're trying to compete with. And, and I'll go back, I think the total project's $11 million. So you're getting more than, you know, 10 bucks back if the council was to approve it, if you're trying to look to leverage your dollar. That's a pretty good leverage. As Councilmember Espendola mentioned, you know, you, you need to have a significant amount of money to be able to incentivize projects. This is one of them, and it's one of the reasons why we said, hey, let's get this to council as quickly as we can.
Mr. Mayor, I would be in agreement with yourself as far as, we've got to have prudent use of our funds. It's a great project, but it's how do we spend 1.4 million? Do we put three-quarters of it into one project? Therefore, I would move tonight that we authorize the city manager to sign a commitment letter of a deferred loan to the regional housing authority for the New Haven project in an amount to exceed 400,000 from the low mod housing fund. And we could always come back and arrest things at a special meeting if need to, but I'm comfortable with 400.
All right. I've got...
Through the mayor?
Okay. When you're done, I'll let you go first. I'm sorry.
I've got one question, and I've got one comment request next to me, and now two. All right. For 40 units, what are we looking at receiving in the way of impact fees? Or do you know a rough number, Darren?
Approximately 1.4 million? Is that what the project was? 1.35 million in impact fees, and, and I'm also including water and connection fees.
That includes that?
Yeah. So I don't know exactly what's the breakdown between impact fees and connection fees.
All right. Okay. Comment. CFD fees per unit?
CFD is annual assessment of...
$310.
$310 a, a unit. This would be the first apartment project in the city to be, that would have to pay that fee.
There have been others that have been proposed that would have to pay that fee.
All future, yeah. So, so they're the first project to come forward since the council has actually adopted the CFD. So they're the first one that's been impacted by it.
So that's another 12, four a year on fees that they would be paying. Okay.
Well, there's a use for those fees.
Right. It'd be for police and fire and so on and so forth. I, I'm, I disagree with Councilman Shaw. I think we should do the 850, and then if the count, and then if the consortium gives them money, we'll get back, we'll get back paid. Now, I mean, let's promise that this way they can move forward, they can get this project going, and we can help the homeless and help cure the homeless situation that the community is in today. So, and then if they, what I'm saying, they only get 200,000. I mean, and this money, so we've got 1.4 million. It's been sitting there for how long? We haven't done nothing. We have a great project coming up. Yes, it's three-quarters of the amount of money, but there's nothing in front of us. Nothing's asked in front of us. There's nothing in the books. There's nothing on the horizon for somebody to ask us for some money to build some affordable housing. So this is a great chance for our community to step up and help a worthy cause. And like I said, we do the 850 on conditions that the planning commission approves this next Wednesday night. And then if we get the 400 back from the consortium, we're only down 450,000 instead of 850,000.
Trying to figure out procedurally how we go about this. What I'm going to do now, you have one more thing, Councilmember Shaw?
I was just going to help guide you, sir, if you would like it.
Well, I'm good. I know what, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to, I have something to say before we vote, but I'll open up for public comment, if any. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sirs. Line up. Go for it.
Pat Miller, President, Sutter County Tax Payers Association. I disagree with the 850,000. If you give them that, they're going to take it. If you give them 400, they would have more incentive to come up with the 450. You know, don't give it to them upfront when there's a good possibility that you can entice them to, to come forward with the 450. So... you can entice them to, to come forward with the four fifty. So...
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nikki. I live at 549 Clintway in Yuba City. I just wanted to point out that this housing project is beautiful, and I hope that I qualify for low-income housing because this is a nicer place than I live and I work really hard for my money. I'd also like to know how you know that the homeless will use them, because we have talked to some homeless people, and from what we hear is that they don't want to live in our housing, they want to stay in their little communities that they're in. A lot of them have background problems, criminal records, drug addiction, those type of things, that they don't want to come out into public facilities like this because they're afraid of, you know, getting backtracked. So I don't think they will use them. If they do, I think they will maybe use them during the winter when it's cold and they need some sort of housing, but what happens in the summer when they all move out, because it's perfectly acceptable to live by the river bottoms these days. I think Councilmember Shaw has brought up some really good red flags that I think you guys should take a little more time to talk about and consider before voting on moving forward. With all this money, is there a cheaper way you could build something similar that is not like the Taj Mahal for complexes, that we can maybe save some money in that department but still give people a building and some rooms? And I'd like to know who they're going to use to build. Are they using local companies from our area and providing jobs, you know, in our area, since they're going to be building for our area? I think that they should give back to the community in that way and use local contractors and local people. I want to know if these places have a kitchen? Do they cook their own food? Are they still going to be leaving their nice apartments to come steal from my fiance's business and bring stuff back to their apartment now that they have somewhere to hide it? Councilmember Carlos, all right, you said that nobody has asked or brought other opinions forward, asking for money. I was wondering if, do you have to come ask for your money to get something moving to deal with this homeless problem, or can you guys just see a need and go after yourselves, or do you just sit and wait for somebody to come give you money? Because you could be waiting all day instead of just seeing the need and figuring something out and acting on that yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thomas Burns, 1885 Green Gate Street. I do want to say that, to the vice mayor, that the city doesn't earn any money. Neither, no government entity earns any money, okay? It's all taken from the people. And I am, I was going to skip this meeting, but I'm glad I came tonight to see the sham action and how they run this program. It's disgusting to me, and I don't want to drive by this welfare skyscraper every day when I go to work, because I earned my, my keep, and I'm totally opposed to the project, 100%, 1,000%. I like everything Nikki had to say, too. But how about working for a living? You know what I mean? That's what most of us do. I'm tired of this nanny state program. That's all I got to say about it. I mean, I've got plenty more to say, but that's it for now.
Thank you, sir.
Vince Burns, and I live at 549 Clintway with that beautiful blonde right there. And I came here tonight because I read in the newspaper, and you guys probably have seen me, I've been coming a lot, and I came here tonight because I was like 55-year loan, that's 3%, and that's a good loan, man. I'll take that, too, if you guys are handing it out. So to find out that it's not really a loan is kind of nice to hear. I would like to see that money come back to the city, any kind of loan we get out, I'd like to see it come back. I understand how, by listening to the suit, that we are getting, like, putting out a million, getting the money back, gaining a 10 million, 11 million dollar project, I understand that now. But I don't, if I could ask a few questions to this gentleman, I can't remember his name, he said that their capital or their funds are the highest they've ever been. What are they at? How come they don't pony up the eight fifty or four hundred thousand? And, you know, because if their capital money's good, well, they loan themselves and might get it back at a 3% 55-year loan. And I read in the newspaper that also that it is forty units for, but I think it said a common kitchen area, if I recall, and is so the units don't have any kind of kitchen in them, or is it just bed and bath? And it is extremely nice, I will say that. And I've worked on a lot of projects like this with low-income housing. I did one of the phases in Richland Housing, and I worked with, I worked with a guy named Vicente who works for Sun Suri in construction, and they build many, many units like this. He was telling me just a week, weeks ago, and I'd like to get more time to clarify, but they built one of these in Sacramento, and then he went back to visit it, and he said, "Where's everyone at?" And there was nobody there because the rent was only $200, summertime was out, they rather spend their $200 somewhere else, and they said, "Wintertime, they'll be back." And so I would, I'm going to reach out to Vicente tomorrow and ask him for information on that project so I could relay it to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm looking at the floor plan here, and they do have kitchens.
Oh, they do?
They, yes.
I didn't see the plan, I thought it was in the newspaper.
After the meeting, or we can, you'd be happy to look, show it to you. There's a community area but not a community kitchen. Sir, welcome.
Harjit Singh, Yuba City. It has been a fascinating conversation tonight. I'm glad I was here to just hear both perspectives. I just want to say that, you know, we've, we're speaking about the homeless population, that these are also members of our community. So, you know, when we speak about these people who live in our community, it's important to understand that, you know, these people, most of them don't choose to be homeless, you know, whether it's mental health issues or whatever it might be, they are in the situation that they are in. And so when thinking about ways to help this population, shelters are nice, they're a great start, but shelters are not the solution, they are a first step. Ideally, what we want is for homeless members of our community to be reintegrated into our community, so that they are working, they are paying taxes, and just regular members of our community. And from what I understand, this is the next step into that reintegration process, where maybe they've spent times in shelters prior. This is not free housing, it's affordable housing. And so anyone who is residing in the complex, in any of the units, they would be paying rent as you would do in a normal apartment, and, you know, so whether they're staying there for all 12 months or 10 months, whatever it might be, they're paying rent in an affordable unit throughout the year. And I think that as, as those who are experiencing houselessness begin to reintegrate into society, you know, it, it doesn't come just out of their own will, and which is why there seem to be supportive services for them as well. And so I'm very excited to see that a project like this has been proposed. I hope that our community continues to propose further projects so that we can help all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Was it Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name is Richard Cray, Yuba City. I'd like to thank this gentleman for his comments because the staff, the private, the housing authority, and these folks have brought forth what looks like a step forward for Yuba City. And the citizens of this city deserve some action from this council. I would hate to see you guys kick the can down the road and hit, listen to all the naysayers, say, "Oh, I don't like this," or "Why can't they get a job?" We need to do something. This is an opportunity for action, and I, I hope you take this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, Clay, you're going to have to forgive me if I'm wrong, but judging by your body language, you seem fired up.
No, no.
I'm just, okay. I just want to remind you to be courteous.
No, I am very courteous, no.
All right, go ahead.
Vincent Burns, I'm back. I just put my arms, I get that a lot, I look tired, man.
All right, you're good.
But I was just going to say that I've been spending a lot of my free time down at the river bottoms, and this is something I'm pretty passionate about. One of my employees is sisters live down there. I've had employees who've lived down there, and I've had employees' fathers that live down there. I've been down there talking to them on a weekly basis. And my experience from that is, and coming, the knowledge I've gained from them is, they don't want to come back into society. I am 100% for a project like this. I think this is a great step. But my employee sister, down there six, seven years, she goes, "I don't want to come back." I talked to two people on Friday, two or three people. "I don't want, this is the way I want to live." So I don't think that, you know, a lot of people want to come back into our ways. And another question I had was, too, is, is there a limit on how long people can live in these units at such a low rent? Because, I mean, if it's super low, then you don't want to aspire to pay a normal rent, which is 15, 16 hundred dollars a month. So that was it.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, I've never had the pleasure of meeting you except right here, so I just want to, it's my job to maintain order in here, you know what I mean? It's all good. Gus, if you don't mind, I wanted to have a couple follow-up questions from their comments. We already clarified that there are kitchens. As far as the clientele that will be living in this housing, are they vetted, or is it just the first-come, first-served type thing?
Absolutely vetted. Mr. Mayor, background checks are done for violent criminal activity, sex offenders, you know, just not allowed.
And then is there a time limit?
No, it's, the funding sources are for permanent housing.
Permanent?
Yes, not transitional.
It's not a permanent building, it's permanent residence?
Correct.
If they want to, all right.
There was just a comment I wanted to clarify about our capital accounts, and the comment was made, "Why can't we loan that money?" And it's a good question, but those accounts are restricted to property. And so as you heard Mr. Gale mention, deed restriction. So by law, I can't loan any money from, from, you know, project A to another project. They are, those dollars are restricted to pay their debt, take care of their capital improvements, maintenance reserves, operating reserves. So it's, we can't use those monies to commingle other programs or projects.
All right, thank you, and did you have a comment?
Yeah, Gus, while you're there, still there, too, can you please let council know that on the rent, as the tenant does well, that it doesn't stay that rate?
Yes, Councilmember, so rents are based on income, so as incomes rise, then rents rise as well. And there could come a tipping point where someone's income is too high and they don't qualify to live anymore. And so then they're served a notice to vacate due to over income, and that does happen at some of our properties. And then so, you move on to the next person on the waitlist.
Thank you, Gus.
Yes.
I'm not just up here playing on my computer, I was doing a little research. Appears to be an Assembly Bill number 346 signed by the governor in 2017, and I would ask staff to probably look into this. It's Assembly Bill number 346, which would permit the use of these funds for homeless shelters. So, that being said, I think that that's probably an issue that would need to be clarified.
You mean, do you refer into the money that we're talking about spending here?
Yeah, this, this is definitely coming out of the low, the low-mod housing funds.
Okay. That goes back to the potential use of the money, which is why we're kind of wanting to kind of lower, take a smaller percentage of our total pot. Does anybody have anything else before I continue?
I want to make sure that the intent in looking this up was not necessarily to torpedo your project.
No.
It was the appropriate use of the funds.
Right, understood, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, because we've heard comments both sides, as a council, we've only been on the job nine weeks. We want to tackle this whole project with the homeless, but as he said, it's more prudent use of the funds, not to torpedo, but you potentially have another four fifty, we only have so much money. We want to make sure that we use it in the best light. This is not that we don't want to do something for the low-income and the homeless. We absolutely do, we want to do the right thing and the most prudent thing.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Anybody have anything else?
Through the mayor, I, thank you for clarifying on that. I was looking at the old previous legislation when I made the comment earlier, but that said, what Councilman Boomgaard just mentioned, the allowability to use these funds in the structure that you're proposing is still allowable. But it's also allowable for shelter. So there's two options into that, that's, I just wanted to hear that. And I think I'm good.
That's it, all right. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to proceed with staff's recommendation with the exception of the amount, that would be 400,000 instead of 850,000. I'm just going to take the initiative here, and what we call, I've learned the term recently, a friendly amendment, if, if I may. The 400,000, I believe, presumes that we're going to get the four fifty from the homeless consortium. We don't, we don't know that they're going to loan the full amount requested, just like we probably won't either, right? So, and I also kind of want to have a prominent presence and send a prominent message that we do support the notion of affordable housing. I would not want the undesirables that are being vetted out living next to me as well. But it's hard not to get emotional here, but we have homeless kids down there. That's why I'm supporting this, because if we're going to vet, we're going to get a kid one day that he, that he or she doesn't sleep under the stars or in the rain. That's enough said there, okay? So my friendly amendment would be, this is going to be experimental, that we, we loan up to 600,000, once we find out what the homeless consortium will contribute. Also, piggyback on that, I'm not sure of the mechanics of this, but I would like to offer a 10% reduction in impact fees, with the exception of the public safety aspect of our impact fees. In addition to up to 600,000, depending upon what the homeless consortium loans. That would be my friendly amendment to that, if you're, we can go back and forth, whatever you prefer, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm good with that. I just figured we would handle that in a special meeting after we found out what the homeless consortium did.
Yeah, okay. And I would also like to add for the motion, this is all contingent upon the planning commission's approval of the project. I'd like to do that now so we save time later if they should approve it. That would be my motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
To the mayor?
Yes, sir.
There are certain limitations on the council's ability to reduce impact fees without also backfilling them from another funding source. So there are, and I'm sure Robin can probably talk to you, or Darren can probably talk to you a little bit more on that, so I would suggest caution before authorizing a certain reduction in those fees. Perhaps that the fees could come from the identified housing sources first, and then if we can reduce the, the development fees and backfill them from a different source, that'd be something that you could do then.
All right, so we can move forward today with the consideration of potentially offering these folks a 10% reduction or whatever?
Yes, and you can direct it to come back for that additional 10% if you like, and you can address it at some future date if it becomes necessary.
Okay.
I, I'm good with that.
You're good with that.
Ms. Espandosa?
Espandola.
Espandola.
You call Ms. Espinosa. I was called Gloria the other day. Hey, I take her.
All right, so we have, well, my mission, and we have a second?
I have, yes, I said it.
And we have the friendly amendment to the friendly amendment referencing the impact fee reduction with the exception of public safety appropriations.
And to the mayor, just so I'm clear as to what motion is on the table, and the public's clear as well?
Yes, and I'm clear. Thank you.
So the, there has been a friendly amendment to Mr. Shaw, or Councilmember Shaw's motion, and it's been seconded by, seconded by Councilmember Espandola, and that would be, that the amount would be 600,000. There would be a proposed 10% reduction in impact fees, but if that were necessary, that item would come back at a future date for further consideration by the city council. And the entire approval would be contingent upon the planning commission approving the conditional use permit for the particular project.
Very close. The, it would be up to 600,000, essentially it's what the consortium contributes. Eight fifty minus what the consortium contributes, and we will contribute up to 600,000. And I think the way you phrased it was, if it was necessary as far as the impact fee reduction, I think if it becomes possible to reduce their impact fees, if we can find a way to make that happen, of course legally, I would like to do that for them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And of course, contingent on the planning commission approval. Are we all clear? And we, do we still have a second?
Yes.
We do. All those in favor?
Comments?
Oh, whoa, I'm sorry, one more comment?
Just, I'd like to comment. So the 600,000 that we are going to give a loan to, to the regional housing authority, in the future to come, within the next year, we're going to end up getting approximately 1.4 million in our general fund off this 600,000. off this six hundred thousand dollar loan. So I think that is a very good investment, a very good investment. And
Good point.
I'm ready for you, sir.
All right.
And, and I'm sorry again, we've just been talking here to the mayor.
No problem.
With regards to that ten percent reduction in impact fees, I'm assuming that does not, that, that does not include public safety?
You, you excluded that.
And does that include connection fees?
That's a good point, I would say no.
Okay, I'm seeing Councilmember Shaw saying no and if Councilmember Espendola can say no as well, I, that would be a friendly amendment.
So we're not reducing connection fees or public safety? The other thing is ten percent, we're, I mean, they're gonna get ten percent less for the library, that type of thing, okay? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, all right, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
Good luck tomorrow, Gus.
Long discussion, but I think it was, was worth it, it was good. All right. I wrote all over your, I'm supposed to say now.